Let the call to council meetings to order. We'll start off by invocation, it's by his prayer. Heavenly Father, right now we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. Heavenly Father, we know that today we are discussing the city's business and we ask that you give us the guidance to do so. We ask that special blessing upon our city as we go through these difficult times, where we know that you will give us the wisdom in order to achieve the goals in which we have as a city. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ's name, that we pray, and that's called amen. That being said, let me move on to the meeting minutes. All those in, by the end of the discussion about the meeting minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Has been moved to second it, to approve the meeting minutes, all those in favor, better be known by saying aye. Any opposed, in the finished chair, ayes have, and the motion carries. Item number one, on the board appointment, we don't have any new board appointments, but we will have to update some uh, some zoning boards, um, so if you have some names, prospective names, please get those submitted to me so that way we can start to build and we can move forward with uh, filling in the holes. The John K. Public is interested in serving on the board, uh, we have multiple vacancies and we're looking for people that want that desire to serve. Is there any more discussion on item number one? Alright, item number two, so we're gonna ask to strike item number two from the agenda that was approved last meeting. So I'm gonna strike item number two from the agenda. So the new item number two is uh, Pickens County ambulance service. We're gonna allow Pickens County ambulance service uh, on unfinished business, they were unable to come last meeting, uh, but they are present today. So we want to give them an opportunity to speak at this time.
Um, Karen, if you'll give Baker just a few more minutes to get here, um, if you have any questions until he gets here, I'll be happy to answer him.
Okay, would you be, would you be alright if I allowed Green County ambulance service there here as well, they would like to speak, is that okay to know? Okay, alright, I'm gonna allow you to speak at this time and then when uh, he comes in, we'll move forward with Pickens County.
My name is Christopher Jones, I'm the director, running together, I ain't never, it's a little different from how I would do ours at Utah. Um, do I need to mic my loud enough? Um, my name is Christopher Jones, I'm the director of Green County ambulance service, um. We have served as a backup EMS service for Pickens County in the past, um. The late police chief of Pickensville had, he used to call upon us whenever Pickens was engaged in calls or had an extended ETA, they would call. They request for us to come and run calls in their, in their town, and we did that on three or four occasions. We also do the same thing in Sumter County for Livingston, and we do the same thing in Meringo County. Um, my offer was to, you know, we can serve as a backup service, like a mutual aid. If Pickens doesn't have the, the resources or the trucks, or you know, if it's coming from Tuscaloosa, you know, Utah's not far from here, and that's where our main station is with all of our, our ambulances, so we can offer that service to, to you all, um, like I said, you just let us, let me know what y'all need from me, and I'll do everything in my power to, to make it happen, um. Monday through Friday from eight to four, I've got three ambulances on duty, other than that, I have two that run twenty-four hours, and at least one of those is an ALS truck, so we can serve any kind of need you need, as far as that, you know, like I said, I've I've grown the service a lot when I took over, it was very small, and we had one ambulance, we now have four. We have a boat, we have an off-road vehicle for search and rescue and stuff like that, so that's also an option if y'all ever need it. We have it available to, to come and, and help out for stuff like that. Um, so, I'm doing everything I can to grow our service, to make it, the footprint larger, and to, to be, you know, forever before I took over, we were the ones calling on neighboring counties for help, but now we're the ones who are the help to neighboring counties, and I do feel good about that because, you know, we are feeling a need that has recently became an issue in our little pocket, you know, as far as that part of the state, but, so. And so I'm, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Right, okay. Oh, and I wanna make, I wanna make this, this very clear, abundantly clear, we're not getting, we're trying to get rid of Pickens County ambulance service. We're working in adjustment with uh, them, uh, that if they're already out, then we have a secondary place to call. Uh, my staff, um, as far as uh, Chief Jones and uh, Chief Jones, um, have already got your contact information, so in the event that uh, we do run into those issues where backups are needed, because Pickens County ambulance are the yeah, probably, of the helicopter is not uh, available, then that will put you on uh, for that, uh, so I don't wanna make it seem like, you know, we're trying to get away from Pickens County uh, ambulance service, but we ain't. I'm being abundant, I want that to be abundantly clear, but it is important that we do have a secondary service uh, that come available and uh, may be able to provide for the needs of this community. So I just wanna make, I saw some ayes kinda opened up, and I wanna be clear on that, so that way we know exactly uh, where we standing at, um. We're trying to augment our services and not decrease our services.
My question is, how you doing, man, how, y'all strong on that time?
We're, we're like any other service, we, we have a stream, you know, group of people that we rely on, but ninety, ninety-five percent of the time, we don't have the issues with staff, and we are, we're uh, fortunate in that, because a lot of services are hurt with people right now, but thankfully, we, we have, have had good luck in that department. And also, you know, not just only if they're out, but if there's some sort of large-scale accident that requires three, four ambulances, we could also come assist with that as well, um, because I know that we, you know, we've had a lot of, of large-scale incidents happen in our county in the last three or four months, that we've had to pull resources from Tuscaloosa Fire to come and do that, so you know, stuff like that, I, I know how big of a help it is, so we're also available to assist in anything like that.
So, just explain to Peter, that we do sack, you keep saying there. You get your call from the police, or the ambulance, or 911?
The, the quickest way would be, is that whomever is calling for the request, to call me directly. Because if you go through our 911 department, they're gonna, you're gonna call them, they're gonna hang up, they're gonna call me. It, it's just as straightforward, just to call me, and because I know how many trucks we've got on the road, because our, our dispatch office doesn't really do much with the ambulance service as far as our day-to-day and our schedule and stuff like that, like most. Like Pickens, North Star is their main dispatcher. They know who they've got on, they know what they're doing, they know where they're at, we're, ours is not like that, our dispatch office basically just gives us the call, I'm the one who orchestrates and knows where the trucks are, what they're doing, how many we've got on. So contacting me directly is the quickest way, because I can hang up and call the crew and say, hey, get around to Aliceville for this, and then I can call our dispatch office and tell them, hey, this truck is going on a call in Aliceville for this accident, and just take care of that part of the back end. That's, that's how Livingston, their fire chiefs, they call me directly, and I, I did the same thing with them, did the ambulance headed toward them, and then call our dispatch office and tell them, hey, this is what one of the ambulances is doing.
Um, I've known Chris for years, we worked together, what did you, Fred, um, he was at North Star? Um, and you have done a great task, so I'll, I'll be there, but my question is, where in the world are you finding resources?
As far as people?
For people, equipment, whatever you need.
Donations and grants for equipment, um, and I've got a lot of folks from ASAP and Amstar, and a lot of folks from Mississippi down that way that work for ASAP, um, I don't wanna talk ill about ASAP, but I have had a lot of people come to me that are, do not like how they operate.
We have a, a previous employee, ASAP does.
And that's, that's what the majority of them, they're at North Star.
But us being nonprofit and privately owned, our, our resources are, we're at the, the very bottom right now. Tuscaloosa's actually paying for our second unit, if we can have, we have enough people to have a second unit, Tuscaloosa pays for it. We're barely making enough money to pay for, for one twenty-four hour truck.
That's, that's the way we were when I, that's why I approached. I found out about the issues with the services of Meringo and Sumter, and I went to the hospitals and the nursing homes there and said, hey, here's my number, if you have a problem, they can't have service provided, I can, we can do it. And that's grown into, we have ten or eleven, like, doctor's appointment transfers from Sumter Health and Rehab a month, like it is, we went from like four or five out-of-county requests, last month we had twenty-six out-of-county requests. That's what Tuscaloosa is.
Well, we, we wouldn't have the staff for that, right now we have two dialysis patients, and most days we can't, they'll sit up there two or three, four hours just waiting to get back home, sometimes they miss their appointments because we simply can't get to them. Um, and we all have, even if we do have two units for transport and operated Tuscaloosa or, or Baptist, you know, they're gonna have to wait for us to get back.
The good thing about us not having to, I mean, we don't have to do it for them, I just tell them Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays are dialysis days. We can't do nothing those days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that's where we do doctors' appointments, and uh, the day truck I have is only made for, and they serve as a backup truck, because the second twenty-four hour truck is a BLS truck. They do the majority of dialysis and doctor's appointments, and that day truck is there, and that timeframe could be a second truck for 911 calls if the main truck goes out.
But you guys primarily transport to Tuscaloosa or do?
It depends, um, if it's low acuity, and we've got one truck in the county, we tell them, we will take you to Green County Hospital. If you would like to go in ambulance and take you there, if you need to be shipped out, they'll transfer you. If it's something that does not need to go there, then you know, we'll go to Tuscaloosa, or if it's down there Sumter, we'll go to Meridian. Um, very rarely, we rank calls on fourteen, close to the Pickens line, and we've taken a couple to Columbus. But it's, it's just a mix, or Brian Whitfield in the Mottles, uh, we've taken, we just, we take a good day there from Fort Flint to South Farley County, um.
Well, one of the issues we're facing now is that Medicare will not pay us additional mileage to go past the nearest hospital, so if you live in Aliceville and you have Medicare, and you don't want to go to Green County Hospital, Sumter County Hospital, or to Macon, you, you would like to go to Tuscaloosa where your doctors are, we'd happily take you, but Medicare does not pay for the mileage to us past the closest facility. So if it's thirty miles to Utah, fifty miles to Tuscaloosa, we, Medicare does not pay us that additional twenty, twenty miles.
Are y'all uh, super rural, or rural, super, y'all fourteen mile?
Medicare says closest hospital, they don't care what kind it is, where your doctor is, the closest hospitals. Where they prefer for you to go.
We try to do that, all, I mean, and not only does it help keep our trucks in the county, but it also helps out Green County Hospital. A lot of people would not go there, they would bypass there to go somewhere else, so it kinda helps them out with, with their numbers, but it also keeps our units in the county. And so far, I mean, we, the people over there haven't really had a problem with it, because, you know, they're, they're very appreciative of the service, and, you know, we haven't had a lot of issues with that, um, every now and then you will get one, but if it's anything cardiac-related, stroke-related, anything trauma, they know nothing of it, they go straight to Tuscaloosa or Meridian. Um, especially now that we don't have a helicopter, so Mottles is doing, it's a little more of a problem. Uh, that's a whole lot of ball of wax, but.
So, so you have, you written out your service in how many counties?
We primarily serve Green County, but we do backup 911, we, we've done that for Livingston and Sumter. And we do discharges out of the hospital and transfers out of nursing homes in Meringo and Sumter County.
So, would you be taking on Aliceville case load, or would you be taking on Pickens County, and how would that affect uh, the services as opposed to, because you already have this going on, so if you come, you know, uh, you may not have, you may have, Meringo may need somebody, and this person may need somebody, so where would that still leave us at?
Well, if it's a 911 call, then that's priority over like, like a discharge, like if Brian Whitfield called me and said, hey, maybe y'all take somebody home, or whatever, and, and I'd say, okay, and the truck is headed that way, well, if a call for 911 comes in here, then I can just tell them, don't go, hold off, and send the truck here, because that person in that facility, it's, they're in a hospital, they're okay. And then once this is took care of, and everything's back where it needs to be, then they can go do that transfer.
So if it was a 911, it would be about what, as opposed to?
Yes, sir.
Does your company need work for it?
Green County EMS.
Green County EMS, and it's, would it be um, fair to say that without uh, all the help that you've had from the grants and the local donations, that you wouldn't be in the position they're in right now?
Well, we have gotten donations from Bingo. It has not been a lot, it has been some, but not a lot, um. We got a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar donation from the uh, Green County Commission, which I used to purchase a brand-new ambulance, um, and I bought an ambulance with cash, it was an old one from North Star, and then we got a grant from the Alabama Rural Healthcare Coalition, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a, a state grant that I got, and we purchased another used ambulance, it's a twenty-twelve international, and a power-load stretcher and a power-load system, I got with that grant. And I financed another power stretcher and power-load system to go with one of our other trucks, and we got, the city of Utah bought my pickup truck, and the uh, Tom Bigby RC&amp;D, I got a ten thousand dollar grant from them to buy our boat, and the uh, Tommy Summer will support me, donated its twenty-five thousand dollars, which I bought our, well, it's a, it's like a side-by-side, but it's not, it's like a little Japanese four-wheel-drive mini truck, I bought it, a trailer, and outfitted it to have to use in tornado scenarios. Like Pickens County, we've got a ton of hunting land, and we've had many occasions where hunters have fell out of tree stands, and they've been so far back, we've had to find someone with the truck to go back there, but now we've got this, and we put a backboard and our crews in it, and go out there without having to worry about trying to locate somebody to do it. Uh, and we did use it in the last two tornadoes, and we were able to get to people's houses that we could not get regularly be able to, so it, it is, it has paid off with that, but yes, the donations and the grant money have, have bought us a lot of equipment that we need.
City of Dallas graciously donated, made a donation for us a few months ago, and that was very, very appreciated. Uh, Karen has donated two power tripers to us, but outside that, we received nothing.
So, with, with, with Pickens County uh, ambulance service, where are you with the grant writing, or do you, who do you contact? Are you reaching out to people?
Yeah, Ron Bolton's trying, he's, he's backing us, he's doing everything he can to, to help us right now, I'm not sure where that's gone, he said he had some ideas, but he hasn't come forward with those yet.
So how are you doing, are you, are you kinda researching on your home, and not waiting?
Well, the, I recently, whenever I was trying to buy a piece of equipment, I discovered some. See, the, our service was started in nineteen seventy-seven, and the same guy was over it up until about five years ago, and there's been two directors between him and me, so some things weren't done correctly, and some things weren't done all the way through. So I recently found out that we have not had our stuff turned in with the IRS to get us to where we can apply for federal grant. So I, the other day, met, we have an accountant that we use now, and they submitted all that paperwork. So as soon as I get the okay from the IRS, then I'm gonna start searching for federal grants that we can apply for. Um, outside of that, just stuff with the state that I've been told about, we've applied for, um, we got awarded grants two years in a row for Tom Bigby, so we can't apply, this time we have to wait until next cycle to do it again. Um, so that's, but knock on wood, we uh, everything we got right now is, is is kinda, you know, where we need to be, so. There are some things I would like to get, but that's on down the road, um. We just recently had to put a new engine in one of our ambulances, it was thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and luckily, we, all the fire departments in our county donated money, and they donated us the whole, I think we just had to take ten thousand to do it. So we were very fortunate that, that they came together and donated us the money to get that truck fixed, because it was, it was down, and that other truck that we got, we were waiting on it to come in, so we were just down to two trucks, and it was kind of a hindrance, you know, as far as what we could do, so now, we've got all that shit handled.
Well, I just asked a question, but maybe if you guys collaborate together, and you know.
Well, I have a difference, it is that they're county, um, we're privately owned, we are nonprofit, we're conventionally, we're privately owned, so that kind of limits.
We're not, we're not county, we're not county, we're not county or private, we're, we're a quasi-governmental, often gray area.
So because we're privately owned, that limits us to some of the, the grants and loans.
Question for both of you, what we are, after question?
Sir?
Question for both of you, when my mother was in the hospital, and then um, she couldn't leave the hospital because we couldn't get a room in Tuscaloosa or North Florida, but um, somebody had a room for Baptist. Okay, she missed it, so, but the doctor himself had to call and say, I checked all those places we go, put in the paper, for Medicaid. Okay, we Alabama, you know, anybody in here or anyone else got, got a call, I wanna say, I like for the Baptist, does it, would it help you go to Tuscaloosa or North Florida, somewhere to pay, uh, y'all had to find out what the room, the doctor said we need to go to uh, be transferred to the uh, hospital.
If they have a medical reason to be, like, they're having cardiac issues, and they need to be where their cardiologist is, then occasionally Medicare, if you word it just right, and you say that uh, go into the closest facility that has cardiac services available. Green County doesn't have that, some county doesn't have that, Tuscaloosa does, but then Baptist has it too, so, we're talking about the, the Medicare?
Yeah. Closest appropriate facilities, the magic term and that kind of thing.
But they say that you have to go Alabama first, when my mother was in up there, couple of Medicaid to pay, and then, then they had no room. So we went on, you all to come back to go to Baptist, but y'all stopped at our field, to go to Baptist, but they had to call to say, uh, every place in Alabama, it was full of, four rooms, then had to go to Baptist, that, I tried to call, so then, that's the way it is now, there you can see it. Of course, you know, as Alabama, Medicaid call, you, you bitching it.
They're, they're giving you a problem because it's out of state.
Problem where? It's out of state, all the rooms in Alabama was full, Tuscaloosa everyone was full.
But then they know if they were paying for it, because it was an out-of-state facility.
That's it, they, and then, then the, the doctor say, gotta go to a hospital, so they had to go to Baptist. But they had to be the one that said.
Yeah.
It was the doctor that moved it.
Possibly goes back.
Well, originally, it's the nearest hospital, unless the doctor.
Thank you, sir, much appreciated, Mr. Chris, uh, thank you for giving us that information, um, and I'm sure they'll, uh, I got your contact, my staff got your contact, so we'll, we'll be calling if in a need, and we encourage you guys to collaborate, or ask uh, what you got here, if you wanna, if you wanna say anything, or you. So I, it's up to you, I mean, like I said, you have, we had a thorough discussion, so we were just talking about, I know you guys.
Do y'all have any questions for me to begin with, relative to the ambulance service in Pickens County?
I think if you give what, before, before you get your questions, if you don't mind, just give us a thirty-thousand-foot view of where we are today, I know there's been some changes since the last time we talked, so if you're trying to give, give us an overview of that, and then if any council member has any questions, then we'll open them.
Okay, so thirty thousand foot view, this, this is basic fundamental budgeting as you can get. We earn, we are, we, we bill an average collection in Pickens County of four hundred dollars per transport, so take, all that we collect, about that transport, we get about four hundred dollars-ish, sometimes it's four-ten, for a transport from Pickens County to obviously Columbus, Tuscaloosa. We make six transports a day, so that's twenty-four hundred dollars a day we generate. We average staffing about thirty-two hours a day to thirty-six hours a day. So if you take six transports times four, that's twenty-four hundred dollars. Our cost to operate is one hundred dollars per hour, times thirty-two, thirty-six, so let's just round it to thirty-four hundred dollars. So we're losing somewhere between eight hundred and a thousand dollars a day, and we've been doing that since twenty-twenty, since the hospital closed. We were, we, we, I've, I've been going to the commission meetings and, and um, actually had an opportunity to talk to some, some of y'all, but um, during COVID, we really didn't have a good picture, okay, so nothing was normal during COVID, okay? We, there were hospitals couldn't take patients, we had long wait times, all of that. So, six, eight months after kind of COVID had gone, late twenty-twenty-two, we began to get a clear picture of where we were, and we were in fact doing what we thought, we knew what we were collecting for call, we knew how many transports we were making, um. We didn't, we got an adjustment for Medicaid, we weren't sure what that was gonna end up being, but we're, we're still, we're kinda losing about a thousand dollars a day in Pickens County. So, common sense would tell you, if you're a businessman, how in the world do you do that, and how are you saying, oh? In healthcare, we do a lot of cost shifting, and that's really simple, Tuscaloosa makes a whole lot of runs, Pickens County is part of our family, so to speak, they've been with us thirty years, so you shift sources, you shift revenue from one area to another. Not a healthy way to continue to run a business, you can't continue to run a business at a deficit, just like you could in a city or a county or anything else. So we're trying to look for some options, um, I don't know what those are, you know, the, I, I, I look at different places, so Green County has one approach to how they do it, Sumter County pays a subsidy for its service, um. Lamar County has a different approach, and really, it's kind of community-oriented, but the best EMS services, the most stable EMS services in the country, and you can look in Mississippi, and they've been doing it for years, are services that are subsidized and contracted with the county. Uh, and you decide as a local group, what you want in an ambulance service, what do we wanna provide, what can we afford to provide? Um, and, and I think that takes, you know, creating a revenue stream, Mississippi has done that. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, and I'm not positive on the whole story, but the governor and his wife, years ago, were involved in a wreck in a rural area and couldn't get an ambulance, and they went to work legislatively and generated about forty million a year for the trauma system in Mississippi, okay, and all of their counties pay subsidies of some sort. Their hospital-owned services are major companies, but, um, and if you look at Mississippi, okay, a lot of our people go there to work, because the counties are able to generate more, they're, they're able to assist the services and generate revenues, so that's one option. If you look, like, we use a helicopter out of Columbus area, um, it is a much bigger, nicer, prettier helicopter than the one that comes out of Fayette or Demopolis. They did, Mississippi puts tax dollars and revenue into its third public service, which is EMS, so we talked to everybody and did, and that, so that's kind of where we are, um, I don't know exactly what y'all, what else I, you know, what, I'd be happy to answer questions, yeah.
Yeah, I got for you. See, I had a video, it's uh, one of the biggest, in the county.
Right.
So you, since you're private, we put ambulance stands here, in Aliceville, and uh, we work out some, 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 we, we got you know, we'll, yeah, whatever, we'll work out some, but uh, and we got the, so I'm saying like this, yeah, I thought, if I thought the county. So I'm saying like this, yeah, I thought, if I thought the county was supporting you on.
No, we did, we.
I know, I found your pride real good though.
So really quick, how we are, where we are and where the Pickens County ambulance come from. We opened in ninety-two in Tuscaloosa, this lady named Peggy King, I don't know who's Peggy, pass the light. Peggy King was over there working in EMS, lived down here in Pinola. And, um, she asked our owner if he would look at coming to Pickens County. At the time, Mr. Harvey ran his service out of reform, out of funeral home, and Aliceville had a volunteer service. Tim Poole and, uh, some of those folks working on Aliceville's volunteer ambulance. So we had no idea, we had no experience in the rural area, but we came in, we purchased Aliceville's ambulance. And we purchased Mr. Harvey's service, his equipment. And Beth Rainer at the time was the mayor of Carrollton. She got us a building for a dollar a year and we started operating, having no idea what we were looking at. But if you think back in the early nineties, mid-nineties, the hospital was at full tilt. They were doing surgery every day, ICU, a lot of patients generated, a lot of activity in the county. And the service did really well, it was, it was comfortable, it supported itself. We were able to buy, we built the building there, uh, we're able to buy new units and that kind of thing. About two thousand three, four, five, things started getting rocky with the hospital. And the less, so this is, we even see it, rural hospitals all over the, the country. But as the hospital got weaker, so did we. And as patients started going direct to other counties, it changed. It's no different than if you build a restaurant here, you want people to eat there, right? And if they pass here to go to Tuscaloosa eat, then it's, well, that's the same kind of thing that's happening, uh, in healthcare. But that's how we became what we were. And we put it in Carrollton, quite honestly, Pickens, it, it, it's really simple. It's for a twenty-four hour truck, twenty-four hours of coverage. And right now, its base cost is a hundred dollars an hour. So it would be twenty-four hundred dollars a day, you multiply that times three, six, five, gets you an idea of twenty-four hour ambulance. Now, the problem with putting one in Aliceville, just for Aliceville, even if you paid the twenty-four hundred dollars. When we license with the state, we license in a county. And the state's rules say that if you have an ambulance available in the county that you're licensed in and receive a call, it has to go. So we had a truck sitting here in Aliceville and there was a call in Gordo, by state rules, we would have to respond. Which creates, uh, an issue. And, and honestly, the way it's set, so sitting in Carrollton, we're ten minutes from everybody. If we have a unit available. And when the hospital was open at full force, the vast majority of the time, we have an ambulance here in the county. If we had an out-of-county call, we could hold an ambulance here because the hospital was there and they could take care of the patients. That's all, by the way, so, so that's kind of where we are.
Well, I wasn't really saying just, just take care of people out of there. But no, my next name was saying, we got to come together for county, uh, and all, like if you do the jail, all of, Adderby, all of them come together.
Well, I should, to me, I, I look at, um, Butler, that county, and tell me the name, the county.
Chalk Town.
Chalk Town. They passed a millage.
Five mill.
Five years ago, and they have the most solid rural EMS service there is. You know, if you, you're talking forty, fifty dollars, sixty dollars a year, you know, for an average household, to be able to support locally. And, and after five o'clock, y'all, we're the only healthcare in this county. When you stop and think about it, you know, when the doctor's offices, Dr. Booth shuts down.
And the weekends. And the weekends.
And the weekends. We are the only healthcare in this county. And in, we will continue to support it as long as we possibly can. These people, they've worked for us for, Vicki's been with us thirty-plus years. Um, they have retirement with us, they have insurance with us, they, you know, they've worked, most of them, twelve, fifteen years with us. And then several, you know, dealing with Vicki and, basically that's, years. So you can't, you can't just come in and close it and say, well, heck, you know, we got to continue to keep them by.
Well, the Medicaid problem also.
Yes, now, we got, we got a Medicaid adjustment, the whole state.
Right.
Got a Medicaid adjustment this year. We've got two quarters of it, right? So it's made a, probably for Pickens County, about a hundred thousand dollars a year difference.
Yeah.
Um, in revenue over the year. So it has helped, the Medicaid adjustment has helped, and if they continue, the legislation will be good.
Can y'all like, step one from the county? We're all good.
Yes, so we're, we are a nonprofit. There's, um, I, I, there's legislation out of Mobile that just came post-COVID. So Mobile County EMS, uh, was working with Mobile County to get some subsidization. And there's actually a Supreme Court decision that says that if you're EMS, it's, you, you don't have to contract and bid and do the things y'all normally have to do. If you have an EMS agency and they respond to receive nine-one calls, you can work with them. And, and we really are just, would just like to break even.
Absolutely.
You know, that's, if we could get there, I think thirty-six to four, probably more like forty hours a day for Pickens County. So a twenty-four hour unit and then a sixteen hour unit, so a unit that works like eight until midnight ish, something like that. And then overnight, you know, one, one, we used to keep the unit on call. The problem nowadays is, we used to have a lot of EMTs in Pickens County. You just don't find a whole lot of people going to schools, being T's, that kind of thing. Now, I will say this, we could work on doing a forty-hour first responder class for people who might be interested in working in their area. There's, there's a lot of options, but I, yes, we can take some, we're a non, a not-for-profit company. We set it up uniquely because of Pickens County that way. And, um, I, I, we just need to get some movement. If we, if there's a light at the end of the tunnel, we can keep going down that road. And I know you can't write legislation and get a millage passed and all that overnight. But we got to do something for the future, or you're going to end up with one ambulance in Pickens County. Twenty-five hours a day, seven days a week, and when it's gone to Columbus or Tuscaloosa. And, and that, in today's world, that's just not, like, that's just not.
I've been fighting the same thing. Our millage was determined in nineteen eighty-three. And we have a quarter of mill, family service, which is fifty to sixty thousand a year. That don't cover payroll for one month. And I'm, I'm trying to get, uh, we're getting on the ballot to get our millage increased. So about the same thing, it can bring.
I think that would be a good, I think it'd be a good, um, start, not just with one, not just with one, uh, city, but maybe you can do a collaborative thing to, you know, to meet with every city in the county and say, hey, this is supporting us, you know, I mean, this is supporting us, so we need to get, you know, on the, whatever we need to do to bring so many into support, to, to have a, another Adderby. So that would be a good thing, you know, not just one city, but hey, everybody come together and sit at a table, let's, let's, you know, come up with a plan.
That's why we're here, just somebody to help us get pointed in the right direction.
So what, so what I, I'll reach out and do, this, this, uh, but if what, I mean, let me go over some numbers right with. What you said, you got two hundred dollars a day that you're losing.
About a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars.
About three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
Three sixty-five a year?
Yeah.
That you're losing.
Right.
Uh, so what the, uh, I know in previous times, we met with all the mayors, that was maybe last year.
Right.
Get full ass, um, to see who was able to give something. Uh, and that's part of what I think this council will allow, some funds to come to you guys. Um, and we want to do that again, uh, if it allows. The question I have is, is that three sixty-five number solid? This is what you need in order to sustain? And the other question is that I have, how close are we realistically? Because of course, you know, I've been brought that question, or that question has been brought to me. How close are we to the doors of the ambulance service being closed? If that is.
As long as we can maintain staff. We will have one twenty-four hour truck and we will even, we're going to continue to try to run the additional twelve hours a day when we have the staff available. So here's the problem, you have Pickens County people driving to Columbus, Mississippi to work because they get anywhere from seven, five to seven dollars an hour or more to go to Columbus and work. Or in Tuscaloosa, um, where they knew the volume. So if we could keep the Pickens County EMTs here, but you can't do that. If, if I'm losing a thousand dollars a day, how do I get somebody to raise? And, and our costs have, our costs have gone, we, we don't even want to talk about it. Ambulance has gone up thirty-three percent since, literally since post-COVID. The base units that we buy went from ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, just like that. Didn't do nothing, same vehicle, look, act the same. But, um, so my opinion is that, that you create a revenue stream and maybe you don't say, okay, well, what we, we need to get, maybe you get a half a million. But right now, we only need three sixty-five to maintain this whole, so I don't, and I don't know the, the legal piece of that, but you could put that money either toward public safety or whatever. Because look, I'm down at the county commission all the time and the police are struggling, the sheriff's department, all of them, you know, it's a real struggle. And the thing is, there's a public expectation for what we will provide. And, and, and it's true with the police department and fire departments as well. The public has an expectation and the expectation is when I call nine-one, somebody gonna be there. Now, in nineteen ninety, when we came here, there was no one, nine-one in Pickens County. There was no public expectation for an ambulance. Got the, whoever came in, most people put them in their cars and got to the hospital some kind of way. But that expectation has changed. And, um, the most difficult part of this business is when somebody needs you and you don't have anybody to send. If you've never experienced that, gee, you can talk about it, but if you've never sat there and you listened to a call going out and I hear them in Tuscaloosa, I'm sitting in Tuscaloosa and they send a Tuscaloosa unit all the way to Aliceville. Or game day last year, I went south of Aliceville to Pinola from Tuscaloosa. Think about, that's an hour-long run and you hear it and you think, if, if it is critical, then I'm going to be able to do it. So, um, and, and I, I think we need to work toward meeting the public expectation. And, and I really think the public believes that it's being provided, it's supported. I don't, I don't, the average citizen, I don't think has any idea where, or how the ambulance service works.
People in Adderby, they, they, they see it now, probably two minutes, hour out, hour out. They'll well have people seize side of the road.
You think it's bad for them and, but as a healthcare provider, this is my fortieth year, it is absolute, it, it just, it's almost unmanageable internally to hear somebody need help. And you don't, you've been sending help all your career and you don't have a best friend.
I, like I, I told all the commissioners and stuff in Green County, you know, the sheriff's department, the police department, they don't make all their money off of our tickets. If they, if they operated off what they revenue in tickets, same with ambulance service. People get sick the same, everything has went up except for what we get paid. We get thirty to forty percent of what we bill Medicare and Medicaid. That's all we can, that's all we get. And that's it, if we can't build a patient for the rest, we just, that's all we get. And I don't know how it is here, but I know in Green County, the majority of our citizens are either Medicare, Medicaid, or private pay. So we, we struggle with that too, that the cost of supplies is sky high. Ambulance is like he said, because after COVID, all of the supply shortages, everybody jacked everything up. Everything has went up except for what we get paid. And we're taking care of the same sick people with the same money, but we have to pay twice as much to, to get supplies, take care of them. And that's what I, I've tried to explain to, to our folks over there, because I'm trying to get a subsidy from them as well. And I've used Perry County as an example, they were paying ASAP eight-three thousand dollars a quarter subsidy to be there. And Perry County is a lot more shaped and taken to green. So, you know, it's, we all had the same trouble with reimbursement though.
Question that left, and I'm sorry to continue. Uh, what's the county that you mentioned that you said was the best one in Pickens?
Chalk Town.
Chalk Town?
Chalk Town.
Yes.
They, when they wrote their rule, they wrote their millage years ago, I, I can just tell you what I've heard. That they had, they put a decimal point in the wrong place and got a huge millage. But we actually bill for chalk calls, and you never hear, that, that's the, probably the most stable. I would say the most stable county in Alabama EMS-wise is Chalk Town, because back in the nineties, they passed a tax to support their EMS service. Their people stay there, they retire there, they leave and stay and work in that county. And, you know, if we were talking about every citizen in the county needed to give, you know, ten thousand dollars a year, now you've got a problem. But forty, fifty dollars a year, you know, to have a good, solid EMS service in this county, well, we could do some things. We, I mean, I think about the things we could do, so just, just putting basics or first responders, it's similar to the volunteers, in a sprint car. So if the ambulance is in Columbus, you still got equipment, somebody who does CPR and can get to the patient and at least start a process. Um, you can, there are, there are options, but it's got to be sustainable.
I know you all are private, you all, so y'all been great here, so do y'all have a board?
We have the EMS board.
Who, who are the points on the board?
Uh, a mayor, each, uh, city appoints a member from the community to give an EMS board. And the mayor of Utah, uh, appointed hers. And the, uh, county commission, they're the ones who appoint the chair and vice chair. And our vice chair is the senior hospital, and our chairman is a clerk of the city.
The L.A. money that you purchased, the L.A. service came for the big open green.
No, ma'am, it came from the Green County Commission. They gave us a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to purchase the, our truck.
And you said something about a tax, so for y'all, who y'all used to petition your tax up there?
We get, I have the warrant taxes, like, so we get a quarter of mill, I come from Green County Commission.
All right, thank you.
The wonderful thing is Pickens County's never had to do this before, you know what I mean? You, for, for twenty-plus years, twenty-five years, it's supported itself.
That's not a paper. Well, thank you guys, thank y'all for being willing to, uh, give us some more information to think, think about. And, uh, I'll be reaching out to all the mayors to see, uh, what they'll be able to do. I, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for Adderby, I think, you know, when I, despite it, that they are willing to continue to do the support that we can. And then if we find other resources as we grow, we'll definitely shift some of those resources to our healthcare, um, wing. Because outside of our local doctors, you guys are here. Thank you guys.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. If anybody has any questions for them, they can ask, they can get their contact information, uh, and I'm sure they'll be willing to, uh, to talk with them. I will move on to new business, manufacturing, home placement requests. We had two individuals that requested mobile home placements, uh, and they were recommended to be approved. The first one was Darryl, uh, Mr. Darryl and Miss Annie Jean Barnes, uh, and that was on, uh, that was on Hood Hill, and Miss Jasmine Stewart, which was on third, um, beside the plantation house. The recommendation from the board was to move forward with the mobile home request. Uh, so I recommend that we approve the, the two mobile home requests from the two individuals previously spoken. Because I was going to go and go. We don't do them second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there a question, most? To approve both? There's most on the floor to approve both for the manufactured home placement, is there a second?
Not a second.
All right, is there any other discussion? Not, we move to a vote, all those in favor, please, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? If any chair ayes have, and emotional carries, our number two, twenty-twenty-four, severe weather preparedness tax holiday. Uh, you saw your fact, they had a tax holiday, um, that is scheduled for February twenty-third, twenty, uh, February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth and twenty-twenty-four. Again, this is February twenty-third, the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth and next year, twenty-twenty-four. This will be a tax. Um, this will be a tax holiday from that Friday until that Sunday at midnight. Um, pretty much that weekend, and that's for any weather preparedness item, uh, that would, uh, that would be there. I know in the past, sometimes we supported, sometimes we haven't, but, uh, what's the pleasure of council? We want to move forward with, uh.
I think we can, we can do the scoop. Definitely, uh, in my opinion, vote no on this one and keep the scoop. Probably got so much going on now, we do other things, we just can't accept tax on every, every hit that comes up. So we're gonna do the scoop.
You got, is that a motion to not approve yet?
Question for you, I'm gonna make a motion. Question for you, I'm gonna make a motion.
Is there any other question?
Who this tax for? I didn't understand.
This is severe, severe weather?
Severe what?
I got fair, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, great, good.
So is there any other discussion?
We, we need, we, yeah, we need to, severe weather, uh, we need to go on most of them, tax, tax, and bam, free tax today. So, uh, how many days, it'll be three days? It'll be the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fifth of February. You know, somebody might purchase a weather ready or something like that. I think tax freedom days right there. So I'm making, I'm, I, I'm making a motion. I think we approve it.
You have a motion on the floor, uh, to approve the severe weather preparedness tax holiday for twenty twenty-three, twenty, uh, I'm sorry, for February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth and twenty-four. There's a motion in that, in the second. Is there any other discussion to have at this time? Anybody, any, any other discussions? All right, we're now moving to a vote, all those in favor of the twenty twenty-four severe weather preparedness tax holiday, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
Independent in the chair, ayes have it. Motion carries, item number three, engine for, uh, dump truck. Um, so Councilman Lewis was able to, uh, we've looked at, we've been looking for engines for the dump truck that we currently have. Uh, we first looked at options to purchase a new truck. The new truck was approximately, that we needed was approximately a quarter billion dollars, uh, and going up due to everything that's going on. Uh, the second option that we looked at was putting a engine in that truck. We've had, uh, we've had, uh, Southwind, uh, engineer or manufacturer to come and look at that truck to see exactly what's wrong with it. They said that the engine needs to be replaced. Um, so therefore Councilman Lewis, um, as well as Councilman Wilders, they were intricately, uh, they had some knowledge about dump trucks and diesel engines. They gave some suggestions on some places to reach out to. Um, Jasper Engines was the one that had the least expensive engine because with a two-year warranty, uh, it comes with all of the, pan, the oil pan, the shaft, everything we need is a swap, swap, um, the cost on that, it's complete, right? Uh, it comes, uh, to a total for us at nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, so my recommendation is that we go for, put this new engine in this truck. Uh, so that way we have a truck that we can utilize for our own, uh, garbage, not garbage pickup, the sanitation pickup with plims or throwaway items. Uh, we have been fortunate enough to thank reform, the city of reform for allowing us to use that truck. Uh, but, uh, we need to be able to use it whenever we need, uh, or we need to be able to use our truck when we need it. So my recommendation is, especially based on the cost of everything that is now, uh, that we get this engine for this truck and get it installed. Uh, looking at install cost, approximately three to four thousand dollars, um, by certified. So all in all, we got about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, um, and pretty much have a new engine on the truck.
Oh, that, that was my question, you said by certified?
Yeah, by certified again, they're gonna stop, yes. Not no shade tree, go, go offensive, shade tree. I'm gonna shade tree myself. All right, is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
All those, uh, is there any other discussion? Not to move to a vote, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Independent chair, ayes have it. Item number four is resurfacing the walk-in track. All right, we had multiple options on resurfacing the walk-in track. Uh, we looked at when we were paving the city to resurface the walk-in track behind us. It hasn't been paved in twenty-five years, I think that's what y'all said, uh, twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, when we were paving, the cost to resurface the walk-in trail only was about thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, right, uh, so with that being said, we looked at some other options. Other options was, uh, placed before us, um, to do a resurfacing of that walk-in trail. Uh, the resurfacing will incorporate some re-asphalt because there are some areas in there that are broken that are gonna need to be repaid. But it also will come with a, uh, will reseal the walk-in trail, uh, with the, with two coats of seal. Uh, the American pavement company, same one that did, uh, Hood Hill, uh, is a company called American Pavement and a lot of people use them around town. Uh, they would be doing the work. He said that it should, that if we seal code it and fix those holes or holes in the, in the pathway, uh, it should last us another five to seven years. Uh, so without having to go forth and repay, I think that's a viable option, a lot of people go out there and walk, some of y'all might go out there and walk. So I think that, uh, this year, we need to try to get that, uh, completed. Um, so that way that would improve the walk-in trails because a lot of people utilizing the walk-in. And that's the lowest price that we've been able to come with, that's not giving a new aesthetic look and then resurfaces it to keep on some of the crack, get the cracks out of that thing. And the cost on that is nine thousand two hundred dollars versus thirty-three thousand dollars.
Is, is necessary, yes.
Yes.
Is it?
Yes. Well, and, and the reason, and I'm staying that, and I believe me, I'm proud of it. I, I like to be very conservative when it comes to the taxpayer dollars, uh, but this is something that the taxpayers use all the time. And this is something that I think that they will be, uh, we talk about health and trying to keep ourselves together. Better get the walk-in trail so that way you can make it, you know what I'm saying, lose something, including myself included, you know what I'm saying? I did the trail, lose a few pounds, but if we start trying to give some more options for people to exercise and make it easier or prettier or what, or, and then safer because it's got a lot of crooks and crannies out there, then we'll be able to do it, but.
Well, I, I, I just, I mean, I know, you know, there are a lot of people that walk, yeah, but I'm, I'm just looking at, you got, you got a walk-in trail and then you got an ambulance service that, you know, I mean, just look, just look at it, I mean, what you look at, look at, I mean, just, is it really, really, and then I guess nine thousand dollars? I mean, can't find something, you know, or work, you know, to, to do, I mean, you're looking at, you, you, because just like you said, if the ambulance service don't come, you know, then we gonna be looking like, oh yeah, they, they had it, they didn't come, they didn't come when I needed it, they took all their time, you know? And we gonna put nine thousand dollars in a walk-in trail. I mean, just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just here to, to balance it out and, and, and kinda let you see who will pay.
But that's why, and again, I, I think that that's a, I think that's a, that's a, that's a viable point, and I, and I don't disagree with that point at all. But I think, like I said, we gotta look at it holistically, we can't, we can't focus all our attention on that. We do have some resources that we're gonna provide to the ambulance service like we have before, but I think we gotta, we can't just focus on, uh, one box, one facet and then kind of just pull it off.
I, I understand that, I'm just saying this is very to other.
And ten thousand dollars to them is a drop in the bucket compared to me speaking to the walk-in trail that's gonna be the, the.
How's the chicken and the egg in it for healthy community?
Any other discussion? You, you can break the hip out of that walk-in. We really do need.
It does.
Walk-in trail. All right, is it, is there, is there a motion on the floor? I'm, I second the motion, all right. Been moving to say, all those in favor of the walk-in trail resurfacing with new asphalt as well as coats of resealing on the walk-in trail behind City Hall, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Independent chair, ayes have it. Motion carries, last item on, uh, on the agenda is the housing project, uh, the housing, uh, we've been looking at trying to attract developers to the city of Aliceville. Uh, we've probably been talking about this a long time, I'm not gonna say how many years. Uh, we finally, uh, we finally got with a developer, uh, multiple developers that come in and gave some ideas, but, uh, we finally got a developer that has given us concrete numbers on the first phase of the project that we need to do. Um, uh, specifically the location that we got identified that owned by the industrial board, Albert Industrial Board, as well as the city of Aliceville. Um, and they have, they have given us, uh, some preliminary work that we're going to have to do regardless of whoever, uh, or whatever we put there. Uh, specifically, we're gonna have to get a topography map, uh, of the area designed in, uh, the twelve acres that's, that's currently being proposed. Uh, it's gonna have to have a wetland study, uh, specifically stating, uh, the wetland information so that way they'll know if the property is able or has the correct solid, uh, or correct soil to, uh, to build on. As well as, uh, title search and land and surveying on portions of it. This is gonna be decreased by some because I got word from the Aliceville Industrial Board that we already have some land, parts of the land already surveyed, uh, professionally already. Uh, so with that being said, um, there was a, the original, the original number they were looking for, thought to complete these, and they're not the ones that are gonna complete it, but the, this stuff will have to be bid out, the specific, the specifics are land survey, topography map, the ALTA land title survey, flats and easements, a geo technical report, a phase one environmental assessment, a phase two environmental assessment, a wetland study and engineering services, all the, for the engineer. Uh, they did have an administrative cost of about seven or eight thousand dollars, that was on the original, uh, soft cost plan. Uh, this is a plan to initiate a sixty-four unit apartment complex, uh, that's the, that's the goal. Uh, initially they have, uh, like I said before, the administrative fee, we told them that, hey, we're a small community, we, uh, administrative fees are, are a lot for us, so they were willing to, and some people who are fond of Aliceville, uh, and they were willing to waive the complete administrative fee. So with that being said, they brought the total from thirty-five thousand dollars to twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, I've spoken with the government utility service board, uh, and I've spoken with the Aliceville Industrial Board to get those individuals to help split those costs for us, uh, because they'll be, they'll be beneficiaries of that too, if they wanna see Aliceville to build. Uh, I've got some preliminary, uh, responses, uh, from them, that they would be willing to move forward with this project. Uh, once I get the official, you know, I, I let everyone know, but I wanna make sure that we started off, um, the breakdown of that uh, would be about nine thousand dollars from the city, uh, nine thousand from the goods board and nine thousand from the, uh, Aliceville Industrial Board. Uh, we've been talking about this for a long time, it's not gonna happen until we actually put some work behind it. So my thoughts, uh, because I've already shared with y'all here that we need to move forward with it, uh, because now is a good time, as any, if you want somebody to come, we gotta put some skin in the game, so. Hello? What's, what's the, uh, lady of council question? Is there no questions, uh, our, uh, committee, we'll move into a motion, is there a motion? Someone been moved and seconded to approve the spin of the call between, uh, the three boards previously, or two of the boards previously mentioned, uh, pending their approval, uh, is there a second?
Let me see.
Oh, I'm sorry. All, all those in favor, we're moving to a vote, all those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Independent chair, ayes have it. And motion carries. Uh, item number three, uh, count our, item number, uh, for council fail, I don't know. Are there any questions about the bill that's presented? Still no questions, all those in favor of approving the bill that's presented, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Independent chair, ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number one, uh, police department. They good at, good at, uh, everybody. Time is lost, but I won't leave with number one out.
Listen, uh, September forty-seventh, we had approximately eighteen cases for arrest. Real quick, brief theft property, two burglaries, two disorder conduct, two subjects that tossed, chased, harassed. Possession barrowana, one child abuse reported. Two were, uh, this, this last month, the last couple of nights, we had two shooters and one victim dead. We've been saying for a while in, in this, in this council, see something, say something, do something. Now, now it, it hit the face. We, we really gotta, uh, step up as a community, as, as citizens and, and do our part. Uh, police department, we gonna do our part. I've been interviewing throughout, throughout the whole day. I guess we're, we're asking for the community as a whole now to really step up and let's do our part. See something, this is your community. This is your community, I, I'm saying in this, in this council tonight, they're saying that young guys, young ladies, like, put your guns down. You know, we, we need each other because as I said, from time to time today, not only the victim family suffer, uh, the offender family suffers as well. So we need to do a community, we need to do our part, uh, we need to rally around, do all we can to protect, keep our community safe. Now, from law enforcement point of view, we're not gonna stereotype anybody, I mean, I'm just setting the record on that today. But we gonna enforce the law more strictly, uh, to make sure because safety is number one. Uh, your safety as a community, you know, uh, as citizens of Aliceville, you gonna see more patrol and, and just say in the street, you gonna see more blue lights. Okay? That's to make sure that the citizens of Aliceville are safe. We're gonna, we're gonna reinforce in our curfew, you know, uh, go to bed, you ain't gotta be out, stay at home. One day I wanna, wanna iterate, wanna say, thank the community, I have thanked the community, uh, for the other night, on the case that we had, for you cooperating with, with what we had on the other night. Again, I, I, on the police department, to the family members, our heart goes out to, to the deceased, but community of Aliceville, let's step up, let's do our part. Don't blame the police, but we big enough to put our B four draws on to take the blame, but we gonna do our part as law enforcement. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out there, we, we, we gonna be out there, we gonna be visiting because everybody is a small town, everybody know everybody, it's a small county. So let's, let's help us police, if you don't have cameras, get you some cameras, you know, hey, let's say something, say something, do something.
That right.
Oh, I wanna tag on with, uh, what you said, uh, curfew, we, we will be enforcing curfew. Oh, I wanna tag on with, uh, what Chief said, uh, curfew, we will be enforcing curfew. Uh, like Chief said, nine, uh, we gonna move it to nine, normally it's, it's, uh, it's ten, moving it to nine, so little kid. Get in the bed, cause if you don't, we will pick you up, we will take you in, we will find your parents, uh, and that's, that's how that process is gonna go. Uh, as far as, uh, as far as, that's as far as, also with the police department. Uh, we, I do wanna commend the community as well, because we got our first tip today. We had a tip line for two years and nobody has given any tips. But thank me to God that today we got our first tip, right? Uh, we got our first tip today, and the tips are anonymous, you don't have to give, your name is gonna give us a number. And we're, we're able to communicate with you, but we don't know who it is, and we got the tip, we gonna take the tip, we respond to that person. And let them know, thank you for giving it to us, so I'm still a fan, we gonna keep it out there, and if don't, if we don't get no other tip from now until next year. Then that's fine, but to me, I think that is, we're noteworthy to say, we've been preaching about this tip line for two years. And we finally got some action on it. It's a email, you go on the Facebook page and look and click the link, uh, it's not a number that you have to dial in or call in. It's an actual, uh, it'll go to your website on your phone, uh, just as quick as you pull out your phone and punch it in, then you can, uh, you can do it. But I just wanna, if you go to the, uh, also, the police department now has a Facebook page. They will be, uh, putting out information, um, something new that we're trying, trying to get information out to everyone, so that way. Not only you see it on my page, you also gonna see on Chief Jones' page, or the Aliceville Police Department page as well. So we're gonna continue to use new techniques to try to alleviate it, but we can't, it's only so many police officers. It don't matter, we had a room full of police, you still can't stop everything. Other people have to be the calm voices of reason when situations arise, and I spoke on, I ain't gonna continue to talk about. But I wanna thank the, uh, Chief for what he did, uh, and what he's doing in their staff, because they've been working some long hours the last week. Uh, but it's been successful, some, uh, you know, some people have been arrested and still have some, some things that are pending. Uh, so with that being said, uh, without.
And, and, uh, to also piggyback on, on what he said, uh, as you said, two years ago, you started this. Uh, line, and Chief changed it to what he wanted to have, and, but it was see something, say something, stop something. And that was a result of another young, uh, African-American, uh, man getting gunned down in Aliceville. And we started, we started, um, a prayer walk, and, and I was on the scene the other night. And one, a citizen came up to me and said, and I was, it was amazing what she said, and I'm like. She said, it's, it's time for us to pray. I said, we, we've been praying, we never stopped praying, uh, we, we've been, we, we haven't had any shootings. In a while, in a while, you know, in a while, so, um. I don't know what's, you know, what's taking place, but we've been praying, we've been praying, we haven't stopped praying. You may have seen us in the community walking around, and then you may not have seen us walk, but we haven't stopped praying. It's just, some more people gotta get on, on the job and start praying too, so.
Other question, the curfew, there's a lot of stuff on social media, with questions about the curfew, what is the age group for that? Is it everyone, nine o'clock, nine through Sunday?
The curfew is eight o'clock, Monday through, oh, not eight o'clock, nine o'clock, Mondays are through Thursday. On Friday and Saturday is twelve, uh, it's twelve o'clock, under eighteen, under eighteen, if you're under eighteen. Not, if you're older than eighteen, yes, yeah, definitely, not, not, it's not a military thing where you out, it's, you're, this is for underage youth.
Unless it continues to keep going the way it's going, and then we will enforce the curfew for everybody. But again, police department, law enforcement, not just gonna sit around and tolerate behavior like this. Any question, anybody has a question?
Chief, uh, I'm sorry, my, thank you, Chief, Mr. Uh, Prove. Well, I do wanna thank, what's Prove for the work they doing on, uh, on the city, around the city, uh, for the staff, uh, we got some, uh. Luke staff, and they, they've been working very hard, um, doing some things around town, so. Press, uh, uh, you know, just get them credit when you see them doing wrong, y'all definitely let me know, so when you see them doing right, please let me know that too. So that way y'all can tell them, hey, they, they doing something good, so I appreciate it, uh, Chief, uh, Fire Department.
Yes, sir, well, for the month of September, we have like twenty-two calls, um, two of those were gun related, uh, one was accident related. Uh, eleven of those were ambulance related calls, um, for grass fires, uh, we have. Tennessee smoke fire, and then we have two where it was, uh, pending medical call, when I, but, uh, we're still looking for volunteers for the fire department.
Also wanna recognize through the Fire Department that, uh, that we are under a no burn notice, a no burn notice. Meaning don't burn nothing, please, uh, it's too dry, uh, and the state has issued this no burn notice, so we wanna make sure we. Uh, identify that, also, uh, Mr. Midnight, if you will, please stand. Mr. Midnight was recognized as the fire volunteer, fire, the fire, volunteer firefighter of the county, correct? On last week, so we wanna thank him for what he's done, he's, he's coming in and running, running hard, so we thank him for what he's done. And, and we wanna recognize him for his, uh, achievements, so thank you very much, sir, we appreciate it. Uh, Chamber of Commerce.
I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody, but if you want to be a member, please see one of us, they're on Chamber, um, we need memberships, things happen. And if you're not a member, you won't know what's happening, so, uh, anyways, Count Louder's doing a great job so far, so we're very excited for things coming up and what's going on.
Thank you so much. Uh, museum report, our museum director's not here, but I do want to announce, and y'all might have seen it on the Aliceville Elementary School page. The, uh, Aliceville fourth grade class, uh, went to the Aliceville Museum. I know we've been talking about that for a long time, about getting, uh, the Aliceville kids over there, but they went over there, from what I talked to Mr. Gilliam. He said that they were excited, they were engaged, they asked great questions, uh, and they represented Aliceville very well. So I'm glad that we finally put that as a council body, and Mayor, we put that partnership together, and I think that that's gonna grow. Cause if you don't know your history, then you don't know what you need to learn and continue to grow on, so I, I thank, uh, I wanna give him kudos for making that happen. Uh, now we have, uh, any, uh, unscheduled public appearances? Do you have, uh, if there's anything from the, by, from the outside sources?
I would like to say. I would like to say, going to U-Town, three times a week, sir, it is so wonderful to see all of those ambulance sitting there. And it was even a city girl, and also a country girl too, but when I see those ambulance, it makes me feel hopeful. Now, when I leave, there's one right there, because I know here in Aliceville, since I've been here. My son needed services one night, and those people had to come all the way from Tuscaloosa. And that was not fun for a parent, especially when your child is ill and needs someone right away. So I do hope that they do take you, because it's badly needed. And also, as far as the resurfacing, I wanna say thank you all, I am a marathon walker. But since I've been walking that hard out there, I have heard it so many days, so now I just take the street. Because the street is resurfacing.
Alright, it's fun, hey, I see you making lemons out of lemonade, I like that, I lemonade out of lemon, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, question for Chief. Chief, uh, yeah, I stand after for you, a couple of years, and two, only, um, it's a month to Thursday at night. And you know, we could have, just for, for people know that one gets twisted wrong and get way wrong, you know, we have. Ball game, they get the stuff for the week, and then they travel, they come in at different times. And they get in at different times and they stop at the store, and, and just that too, cause, and we saying, you said they can't stop at the store, and you know. Cause they do, month to Thursday, sun, I know, you said month to Thursday, it's nine o'clock, right? Okay, Sunday to Thursday, Sunday to Thursday, if you traveling through the week, for ball game, or all the games, not at home, you try basketball and everything else. And you come in at, at nine, nine thirty, ten, but you stop there here, and the parents not with them, so, yeah, explain that part.
Sun, Sunday through Thursday, it's nine o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, nine o'clock, Friday, Saturday, Wednesday. So you still have grace period, uh. It's just, it's just mainly just hanging out, hanging out, you ball game, that's understandable, but when we, when we did this curfew. E- even if it's a night wins, a night, and the game is over with at nine o'clock, just can't hang out till four o'clock. You know, go ahead, get off the bus, settle up, get in your car and go home, stop by, go get drank, but. We just not gonna come game in town, so, and then on weekends, home game, we got like, this week at home. You know, they'll, they'll get from stadium to the gym, and then. We're not gonna allow you to hang out outside of the curfew, if you, if you hanging out outside of curfew. We gonna dress you same way, no matter if you just going to the store to get drank, because the problem came about while we did this curfew was. We had kids outside, we pick them up, take them home, we say, let me see little Johnny, little Johnny in the bed. No, we got little Johnny in the car, you just don't know that they left home.
Eddie Hart, uh, a trip to Melton's to the Brown and Lindsay family, and the Rice family as well, um, we got to be better as a community in City of Aliceville. Um, on a lighter note, and thinking of doing better, um, the District Attorney's Office is doing their board game. Um, fundraiser, just their collective board games for money, um, so I've got suppliers, anyone that's willing to donate, um, physical games for money. Um, and State Farm will be a drop-off spot in the city hall, not as, okay? Um, so State Farm, City Hall, your town, I'm sure the banks, that's pretty typical, um, but anyway, send me for more details, um, that's exciting thing. It was a huge blessing the past couple of years, and we'll meet again this year.
Oh, yeah, big old pack, something I was saying, but we, we gotta step up and do our thing. Have a conversation with a guy. Little old move like Broadway. Hey, man, hey, 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 I wasn't blowing at you, man. Here I got out the car, here I got out the car, I said, I wasn't blowing at you, oh, man, man, we at war. You're walking yourself, man. So, you know, I said, but, I said, go walking away, and that's it.
Thank, thank Council Lewis, I mean, Council Willis, I'm sorry, thank you, uh, just wanna remind, uh, everybody again. The Aliceville Police Department has a Facebook page, people will like it, um, encourage your staff members, uh, who work around. The office staff, or your police officer, they've been doing a lot of, uh, heavy lifting. Uh, also, I wanna give an update on our, our daycare, um, proposal, we had three people that submitted. Uh, information on the daycare, uh, that want, that were interested, out of the R and Q that we put out. Uh, as a council, we're gonna get together and review all of those applications, and then, um, interview and go and scale the best one. Out of that, and we'll get, let me see if they're interested in doing some, uh, some special work with us. And then, uh, I wanna say thank you to, um, to B Mark, uh, B Mark has been doing a heck of a job. At maintaining, uh, you know, their traffic, they would have issue with traffic flow and people trying to hang out there, but they're, um, they're. They have actually done a lot, a lot better, um, and I wanna thank them for that, and I think it makes it safer for the community, cause now they go in there and buy pieces. Wings and stuff like that, they don't have to worry about a crowd being at the door, so thank you for that, and then on the last, uh, the last note, um. Last thing, uh, if you didn't hear the PSA that we gave on Facebook, long story short is. Uh, homecoming is, uh, under review, uh, we are gonna determine how we're gonna proceed. As, uh, the situation progresses, or does not progress properly, uh, and with that being said, uh. Everybody been asking, oh, we gonna have homecoming, I don't know, that's gonna be up to the citizens. If the citizens act the right way, then we gonna continue and we'll, we'll move forward, if they don't, you heard it here first. Mayor Wittenman got no problem canceling homecoming for the safety of the entire city, I'm responsible for everybody's safety. I know everybody wanna have fun, I wanna have fun, but safety comes first. And I wanna look at everybody in their eyes in this room and on the camera, let everybody know that, uh, I don't want to, but if I have to, we will. It will be modified, um, will, there will be some changes, uh, regardless of what happens, um, but, uh, that determination is pending. And as soon as we get with the school, uh, the chief and I have been talking, we've been talking with the school. And they're in agreement with whatever is decided by the police, uh, department and the city, so with that being said, I wanna make sure that's clear. That's the question that I've been getting a lot, uh, safety first, uh, and then, uh, last but not least. Uh, I mentioned, there was some, uh, uh, you know, if you wanna be a mentor, uh, we're looking for males who want to be mentors. Uh, to our males at, in Aliceville, if you're interested in being a mentor as a male, please reach out to me. You can reach out to me on Facebook, you can ask me at City Hall, you can message, you can send me a text message on my phone, uh. But we're going to start our mentoring program for men, or start a mentoring program for young men, uh, from the ages of eight to eighteen. Uh, and we're gonna work with our schools, try to go into the schools at least once a week. We already have offices in the school that come and they are making a difference, but we wanna see people that they see in food fair, or they see in car wash. Or like I see, like I see meat, we go to meat, you know, saying that, you know, wherever he at, you know what I'm saying? But those are the, those are the guys that we need to, uh, that we're asking to be a part of this mentoring program, and we want you to consider doing it. So with that being said, yes, sir?
Question for you here, since one camp, cause this question for me, uh, by this homecoming, you said one, well, I ain't gonna shut it down, I don't know you. Just understand, but would that be just considered a homecoming part, we still, I mean, a tailgate part, or would it could be the whole homecoming? We still have a parade in the box.
All, all that's in discussion, um, everything is in play from canceling the game and everything else. To modify it, to where we have a game, have a parade, and have some, maybe some tailgate, but everything is on the table as far as what we're gonna do. And I'm not gonna give, uh, uh, definite answers, cause I don't want somebody to say, well, you said this, uh, everything is on the table, have to get close to the date, and we'll see what happens. Uh, and we'll go from there. Thank you, is there most adjourned?